Good evening and welcome to the Smyrna Town Council meeting. Before we move into our meeting agenda, we have citizens' comments tonight. Our first citizen's comment is from Charles Berlin. If you'll come forward. If you will, when you come forward, if you'll come to the mic right here and if you'll just state your name and your address and then you will have three minutes to speak to the council.
I'm Charles Berlin, 6714 Lee Road. And my concern is the development back there. What's going to happen with the dynamiting and the burning of all of the trees and brush back there? I've got asthma and I'm sure other people do too, but what can be done about that? But especially the dynamiting, that's going to bother me quite a bit. But that's it. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. And Mr. Berlin, when we get to that project, we will discuss those two items. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker under citizens' comments is Kevin Hicks. Kevin, if you will come forward and state your name and address for the record and then you'll have three minutes.
Hello. Kevin Hicks, 199 Elmville Road. I'm here to address a couple of problems we've got in the town of Smyrna. I think they're kind of widespread. I live on Elmville Road between LifePoint Church and Old Nashville Highway. Busy stretch of road, but a residential stretch of road. And I hear booming car sound systems constantly out there. And we also have a lot of littering out there and also citywide. So what I'm asking for is, number one, some enforcement. Number two, I think the fines should be increased if you guys have the power to do so. I checked with a lady named Brittany at the municipal court. It's only $130 fine for each of those infractions. So for these guys to have a few thousand bucks to put into a booming car sound system, that's nothing. So I would propose to see those fines at least doubled. And also, I would like to see maybe some signs posted in some areas where this is a problem. You know, there's a few places I can think of, that stretch of Elmville Road, also the Enon Springs Road, and maybe Hazelwood Drive also. Those are all residential streets, heavily traveled. And anyways, I'm just asking that we take some action to improve our community.
Great.
That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Kevin, I'm going to kind of put you on the spot a little bit. Can you come address a little bit of... I'm sorry, not that Kevin, our police chief Kevin. Address a little bit about our littering ordinance and the noise ordinance?
Yes, ma'am. Well, the noise ordinance is, basically, what I can recall off the top of my head, I didn't study this before I came in, is that it has to be an offensive noise to those in the area and I think it has to be within 500 feet. Of course, the big thing with both of these instances is these are misdemeanors. And for a misdemeanor to be prosecuted, the officer has to observe or, in this case, listen or hear for us to effectively issue a citation, things of that nature. But again, I have communicated with Mr. Hicks by email and told him that we would have officers try to step it up in his neighborhood and see if we can make a difference. And I agree with him. It is a problem and it's a problem with littering and it's a problem with the noise. And we're going to catch them when we can catch them.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I think all of us would agree as well that the littering especially is something we've all become so frustrated with. You know, how hard is it to gather your trash and put it in a trash can? I mean, it's so frustrating to drive down the street and see that. And one of the things that we've started here in the town is the Adopt a Highway and the Adopt a Road program. And we would love it if you could get a group together and you could adopt y'all's stretch of road if you choose to. And Tom Rose can help you with that and he's with the town and he's right there in the back if you want to see Tom. But we can use all the help we can get as a town in helping to improve the littering as well as the noise. So just know that your voice has been heard and we agree. Okay, we will move into our meeting agenda. I'm going to call the meeting to order. Tonight, our prayer is going to be done by our council member Jerry Short and our pledge of allegiance is going to be done by Ms. Walters' first grade class from Thurman Francis Arts Academy. So I'll ask you all to stand with us for prayer and pledge, please.
Father, we're so thankful for this day, Lord. So thankful for the blessings that you give us. So thankful for the sunshine, Father. Lord, we pray that you'll be with us tonight as we work to do the business of this town. Father, we pray for wisdom as we make decisions, Lord. Father, we also want to remember our fire and our police that protect us every day, Father, for the employees that work for our city every day and come and try to make a difference in the town that we live in. Father, I'm just so thankful for them, Lord. Father, just go with us now and just, Father, pray for those in our town that are sick, those are hurting. We just pray that you'll be with them, Lord. Again, be with this council and I just pray this in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all. You all may be seated. You all will turn and face the audience. Mr. Jerry, can you tell us a little bit about these young men and women?
Well, I don't know if you know it or not, but you're in here with some first ladies and some presidents and we are so glad to have them. You probably didn't realize, some of them are still alive. But this is Mrs. Walters' first grade class. I got to visit them when they did it. It's a living museum is what it is. And each one of them had a character. I know I see Ms. Kennedy down there. I see Ms. Roosevelt. I think one of the President Bushes is down there and Jimmy Carter and some of the others. So they did a fantastic job when I was there. I learned a lot, I'm telling you, I did. And so I was hoping that they could come and just share their talents with us and with you. And so we're so happy to have them tonight. Ms. Walters, thank you for doing this and we thank you for what you do. First grade teacher, I'm married to a first grade teacher back there and so I know you guys work really hard to, for these children and that school does a fantastic job. So we're so glad to have you.
Thank you. So we don't, it's not very often that we get such celebrities here in the town of Smyrna. And so I'm going to give these individuals an opportunity to tell us who you're dressed up as and then what your real name is, okay? And you're going to get to be on TV, okay? I'm sure since you're such celebrities, you're used to that. But if you'll tell us who you're dressed up as and your name.
Jacqueline Kennedy and Meliza.
I'm going to get behind you, that way everybody can see you.
James Polk's wife and Elle.
James Polk's wife, good.
Thomas Jefferson Emily.
Was it Jefferson? Okay. We couldn't even remember which Thomas. We knew it was Thomas.
George H.W. Bush Melania.
So a very famous name, huh?
Eleanor Roosevelt and Sophia.
Maggie and George W. Bush.
Helen Taff Lily.
John Adam Snowa.
And I have to know who does your hair. It looks wonderful.
Gerald Ford and Aaron.
John Quincy Adams and Celeste.
What do we think? You all did an amazing job and I just want to thank you all for being here tonight with us. And you all are welcome back anytime. And thank you for what you've done for our country and history. Thank you all. I don't know if when I was in first grade, I could have gotten up and done that. So pretty amazing. Ms. Diane, I think it's time for roll call. Councilman Cole. Councilman Rell.
Here.
Councilwoman Peebles.
Here.
Councilman Short.
Here.
Councilman Sullivan.
Here.
Vice Mayor Atkins. Mayor Reed.
Here.
Okay, we will move into our agenda. Our first item on the agenda is approval or corrections of the minutes of the March 12th and March 28th, 2019 meetings. Any additions or corrections? Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Minutes pass. Mr. Hercules, any correspondence or communication tonight?
None this evening.
Okay, Ms. Diane, I think we have a proclamation tonight for a very special group, our Senior Citizens Day. It's hard to believe it's already rolled around again, isn't it? Seems like it was just, I'm not ready either. Ms. Diane, can you read our proclamation tonight?
Whereas older citizens bring to our community their talents, their wisdom and their life experiences. And whereas our older population is a productive, active, vital and influential share of our thriving community. And whereas the older American Act was adopted by the United States Congress and signed into law by President Lyndon B. Johnson on July 14th, 1965. And whereas the town of Smyrna is dedicated to ensuring our town is a place in which our population can mature and grow older and offer to our older citizens a place to participate to the fullest in the community. And whereas our older citizens can find within the community the encouragement, acceptance, assistance and services needed for a fulfilling life of independence and dignity. And whereas Smyrna, Tennessee, through a U.S. News and Forbes Magazine national survey, has been declared one of the nation's most desirable places to retire. And whereas the month of May has traditionally been celebrated with tributes to older persons through ceremonies, events, fairs and other activities at the Senior Activity Center of Smyrna and other locations. And whereas the Senior Activity Center of Smyrna, a nonprofit organization formed in 1971, currently serving approximately 500 members for recreational, physical, educational and social activities as well as travel opportunities, is dedicated to the well-being of its members. And with the support of the town of Smyrna, will organize and hold annually a Senior Citizens Day in Smyrna. Now therefore, I, Mary Esther Reed, Mayor of the town of Smyrna, do hereby proclaim May 1st, 2019, as the third annual Senior Citizens Day in Smyrna, Tennessee, and encourage all Smyrna citizens to join me in this worthy observance proclaimed this ninth day of April 2019.
Thank you, Ms. Diane. And if you all will come up to receive your proclamation. How are you all? Good. Here again, here again. Thank you all for what y'all do. I can't tell you how much we appreciate it. And Fran, if somebody wanted to get involved with the senior citizens center, what would they need to do?
Well, we have a simple application that all you have to do is come by the center. We'll give you a tour, fill out the application. Dues are only $25 a year. And we have tons of activities and programs that you can get involved with. We go on trips. It's a great place to come and just hang out and make friends and stay busy and not stay at home and watch TV all day.
Right. A lot of good things. You all do have a lot of great things going on and line dancing and arts and crafts and all sorts of things. So if this is something you're interested in doing, I would highly recommend you get in touch with Fran at the Senior Citizen Center. You will have a ton of fun. So thank you all very much.
That's the Senior Activity Center of Smyrna.
Oh, that's right. Senior Activity Center of Smyrna, yes. With the name change, I had forgotten. Name change, I'm going to have to get used to it. So thank you all so much for being here. Okay, any other awards and recognitions, Brian?
No, ma'am.
Okay, then we will move into item six, which is our consent agenda. And for those of you who don't know, our consent agenda are items that are determined by the town manager to be routine matters and can be voted on together. I always like to read the consent agenda so you know exactly what we're voting on. And also, if there is an item a council member would like to pull off and discuss individually or to vote on individually, we can do that. So I will start with item A, which is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a contract with Nashville Equipment Services Incorporated relative to the installation of 6,000 gallon gas tank and equipment at the vehicle maintenance shop on G Street. Item B, approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a performance agreement with Mix Tape Band relative to music at the Top Gun Night Run 6K Race. Item C is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a contract with Gridium Incorporated relative to the ticket work off order software systems for the parks. Item D is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a sponsorship agreement between Academy Sports and Outdoors and the Parks and Recreation Department. Item E is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a performance agreement with Missy Garnett Band relative to the food trucks and fun event. Item F is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a contract with Yuri Howland Associates relative to our audit services. And the last item G is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a professional services addendum with Dancy Dealing relative to the wastewater treatment plant expansion. Is there an item that a council member would like to pull off the consent agenda to talk about individually? Seeing none, do I have a motion for the consent agenda?
I should do approve.
A motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Consent agenda passes. We'll move on to item seven, which is old business. Whew, how many we have tonight? We have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11 public hearings tonight, so quite a few. I don't remember when we've had this many lately. Our first item, public hearing, is a consideration of a resolution relative to a plan of services for property located on tax map 51, parcel 7. Kevin?
This is Mayor and Council, the first four items are all surrounding the same project. The first item is the plan of services for the annexation of map 51, parcel 7. This is about 69 acres of land located south of Rock Springs Road. This is a document that is required to be put in place for all annexations. Puts in writing all the services the town would be providing upon the effective date of annexation, which will be all services here. The planning commission did recommend this, approval of this.
Any questions or comments for Kevin before we move to the public hearing? Okay, then we will go to the public to see if anyone is here to speak for or against this item. Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing and go to the council for a motion.
I'll move we approve.
A motion to approve. Do we have a second? Second. Second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Our next public hearing is a consideration of an ordinance relative to the annexation and PRD zoning of property located on tax map 51, parcel 7.00, containing approximately 69 acres. It's requested by Suncrest Real Estate and Land on behalf of Robert and Jeanette Gwynn. The property is located south of Rock Springs Road and this is a second reading. Kevin?
Yes, this is the annexation and zoning request. It follows with the plan of services you just looked at. This is tied to the rezoning request that's later on in the agenda. On the map that's on your screen and is, this is the parcel highlighted in blue. The rezoning request is the parcel that's in yellow. It's all one development and all proposed to be developed together. So I will just address really the development for all of it with this annexation request. The land use plan would support a low-density residential development in this area. Surrounding zoning is a mix of RM in the county and R1 and R3 in town. The town would be providing all services to this area upon annexation. The proposed PRD is for a residential development containing 405 single-family lots and 135 townhouses. Access will be from two separate entrances onto Rock Springs Road. The initial entrance would be at Waldron Road. The developer would make several upgrades to that intersection, including signalization. Developer will also widen Rock Springs Road from Waldron to a point east of the second entrance by adding a third lane. That would be done when that second entrance is built, which would be upon around the time the 100th house is being proposed to be built. There is a pattern book and everything that goes with that that is included in your package as well, which talks about the road layout, building elevations, amenities, et cetera. The planning commission did review this and did recommend approval with a couple of conditions. One, that the sewer will come from outside from Potts Crossing, which may require an upgrade. And it did require that the HVAC units be at the rear of the homes with the smaller setbacks that are proposed. There was a public comment before the meeting regarding the dynamite and burning. Dynamite is something that is actually governed and regulated by the state of Tennessee. They would be required to have a blasting permit and typically what most folks do is a pre-blast survey before that, so they look and see if there is any damage already so that they don't have to pay for damage that's already there. But then also, that does document that if there is damage later on, that you have documentation that it did occur. They would be, like, the state fire marshal's office regulates that. As far as the burning, that is something that our fire department would be the one that would be issuing or not issuing a burn permit. So that's really something that Chief Colleton and his group could deal with as far as that goes.
So regards to the blasting, they would need to get in touch with who again?
It's the state fire marshal's office. Steve Smith and the Coes Department, I know, has the exact contact, who contacted about that.
I looked the number up when he was speaking, so I can give him the number tonight.
Sure. I think she's getting this out now.
Okay.
Okay.
That's all I've got.
Okay. Questions for Kevin on this? We've had quite a bit of discussion on this project. Anything further you'd like to... Okay, then I will go to the public to see if there's anyone here to speak for or against this item. If you will come forward and state your name and your address, please.
Yes, Mayor. Dan Epright, E.P.R.I.G.H.T., 114 Seward Street. And you guys probably all know, I don't know, you know, if there's going to be like a zoning change or something, you know, there's little signs that get put up in the neighborhood so the neighbors know that there's a zoning change coming. If there's going to be blasting, is there going to be anything posted in the surrounding neighborhood so that people know that there's going to be blasting?
There is usually not postings of blasting signs, I don't think. Is there, Kevin? Oh, wait.
I honestly don't know the answer.
I see somebody shaking head yes. Do we know for sure?
I'm just asking.
And I don't know the answer to that.
I don't know if the state requires it. I know that we can't put additional restrictions on what the state does require, but I don't know if the state requires it.
Maybe it's a question for the state then.
Yep, thank you.
And I also do know, sorry, one other thing, I was looking up while he was speaking earlier, that if you're within 300 feet of the blasting, then they're required to do the survey. But if you're outside of 300 feet, then it's on you to do your own survey, pre-blasting survey.
Okay, so maybe there's a requirement for 300-foot notification for neighbors or something.
I have a feeling we're getting ready to find out.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
If you'll state your name and address for the record, please.
Kevin Estes, 2925 Berry Hill Drive. There's not a requirement by the state to put signage, but we always require our site contractors to put signage, saddle horn, do several things because having done this for 25 years, I've never let a shot off that didn't get a phone call afterwards. And we typically double our blast survey. The good news, and anyone who's around blasting is never good news. Good news is most of the blasting, the site's got large buffers before it gets to property lines and most of blasting is kind of in the middle, right up there on that hill. So there's quite a bit of buffering. Some sites, you know, Smyrna is very blessed with rock. Some sites don't have that luxury. This site, we dug up to 10-foot dirt, which we were shocked. So I'm not saying blasting will occur, but I think there'll be some factors to help it out here.
Great.
But we, our contractors always post that there's a blasting zone around.
Great. Thanks, Kevin. Anyone else to speak for or against this item? Seeing no one, I will close this public hearing and go to the council for a motion.
I'll move we approve.
A motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item C is our housekeeping item, which is consideration of a resolution in memorandum of ordinance 19-12 relative to the annexation and PRD zoning of property located on tax map 51, parcel 7, parcel 7.00. Do I have a motion?
I'll move to approve.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Y'all are on it tonight. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item D is our next public hearing, which is a consideration of an ordinance relative to the rezoning of property located on tax map 32, parcel 20.00, containing approximately 121.5 acres. It's requested by Suncrest Real Estate and Land to go from R3 to PRD. The property is located on Rock Springs Road and this also is a second reading. Kevin?
This is Mayor and Council, this is the same development. This just has to go through a separate process because it's already within the town. So you are rezoning this property from R3 to the PRD. Again, it's the 121 and a half acres of the overall, you know, 190 or so acre development. Same conditions and everything that was talked about with the annexation and zoning need to be included with this ordinance as well. Again, the planning commission did review this and didn't recommend it to you.
Any other questions for Kevin on this? Seeing none, I'll go to the public to see if there's anyone here to speak for or against this item. Seeing no one, I will close this public hearing and go to the council for a motion.
Motion we approve.
Motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Move on to item E, our next public hearing, which is consideration of a resolution relative to the plan of services for property located on tax map 54, parcel 15.00.
This is Mayor and Council, this is a plan of services for the annexation request. It's the next item on your agenda. This is for parcel, map 54, parcel 15. It's about 48.3 acres of property. The recommendation also includes the annexation of approximately 2,660 linear feet of the existing right-of-way of Rocky Fort Galamville Road, which would be basically from where the current town limits end northward to the northernmost boundary of this property. The planning commission did review this, they did recommend it to you. It does include all services except for water, as this does lie within CUD's service boundary for water.
Questions for Kevin on this? Okay, then we will go to the public to see if anyone's here to speak for or against this item. If you'll come forward and if you'll just state your name and your address, please.
Michael Murphy, 8956 Rocky Fort Galamville Road. Y'all going to have to give me some leeway. I got stopped up ahead like a jug. This is time of the year in Tennessee for signers. I don't oppose Mr. Collins buying the property, I oppose the annexation. And I'll tell you several reasons why, if you don't mind. I want to talk to you about a little integrity and some character because somebody's kind of lost some of it out there. When we bought this, our land in 1992 from the Parkers, they had 20 acres for sale out there, four, five acre lots. To purchase those lots, the Parkers draw up contracts saying you must build a certain size home and it must be built with brick, stone or a log cabin. They modified it for that so we could build a log cabin. The Parker said that a maximum of 500 square feet of lumbum siding was the most you could have on that home. And this is the funny part. The reason they gave you five, they wouldn't let you build a lumbum siding home is, they said that people don't take care of the siding. The siding homes brings down the property value. The siding homes brings down the property value. Now, you guys are voting on annexation. Are you going to guarantee the folks out there that our property value is not going to go down? We have houses out there that are $350,000 to $600,000 homes. And if we stick these houses in there, the aluminum siding homes, we're worried about our property coming down, our property value coming down. Just went up this year. Our tax assessment went up this year, so who's looking out for us because the Parkers are not? The second thing I'd like to say, on March the 7th, and this hallowed chamber is right here, I heard somebody say that we will supply sewer to this property site. We happens to be me and all the taxpayers that's going to be providing it. Where is the sewer going to be coming from? Because the last time I checked, it does not go uphill, it runs downhill. So nobody's ever addressed where the sewer will be coming from to touch this property. My next item would be, is I just don't understand, excuse me, how you can okay to segregate a neighborhood. And if you look at that right there, that parcel, everybody on the right-hand side, everybody on the left-hand side, everybody across the street, we're not in the town of Smyrna. We don't get the perks that come with being in the city limits. We're segregated. You're putting one little parcel in there, and just found out the other day you were annexing that highway in the road just so it touches the Parker's property so it would be a contiguous parcel instead of a non-contiguous parcel. That's not right. And on the plans y'all sent us to our address, it's not on there. The letter you sent, it's not on there. You was going to do the highway. That just came up into my information. That's wrong, people. We're better than that in Smyrna. We're better than that as a city council. There's another thing I'd like to address is the traffic. My goodness gracious. That's the worst traffic on Rocky Fork Ammival Road I've ever seen.
Yes, Mayor.
Ma'am, am I out of time?
Yes, sir.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. That's okay. Mr. Murphy, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Anyone else that would like to speak for or against this? Seeing no one, I will close this public hearing and go to the council for a motion.
A move we approve.
Job a second.
Second.
Second, any discussion?
Kevin, could you address some of the concerns as far as sewer and?
Well, there is the joint development there, or very close, almost a joint development. The bank side property has sewer. There is also sewer in the Cedar Hills Development, and there's sewer. Well, eventually, there's going to be sewer to Blakeney, which is further south. So, I mean, there is sewer nearby. It's not at this property line yet. It would have to be extended by Mr. Collins or whoever ends up developing it.
So not the town of Smyrna will be paying for?
We would be providing the sewer, once it's installed, we maintain it certainly. But no, we would not be running the sewer for them. As far as the annexation, and yes, we are annexing the road to make it contiguous to the town limits. We can legally now annex non-contiguous parcels. It involves the town and the Rutherford County just have to have a joint agreement on who's going to do the maintenance of the roadways and anything else, emergency response or anything else between the parcel that's annexed and the parcel that's not annexed. We've never done a non-contiguous annexation in Smyrna, even though we can do that now. That was the only way to make it contiguous without annexing someone else who hadn't been requested, which we can't do. We can only annex people that requested.
And annexation laws were passed by our state representative, state senator, so it's a state rules that we are following.
Right, yeah. We can't annex anyone who doesn't request it unless we hold a referendum in the neighborhood or some, the property owner gets to vote then. Again, we've never approached it that way. We've just responded to requests as they come about.
Other questions for Kevin?
Could he address the highway? The one thing that he said that wasn't on their notice for the highway? Is it always included?
Honestly, I thought it was included. I haven't seen his map, but that was always something that was something that we, as a staff, we recommended to the planning commission, and that was a part of the recommendation from the planning commission. First, we send, we do send letters out to property owners, adjoining property owners, and that's why he did receive a letter from us with the meeting dates and everything.
If it was not included, highway, the highway road was not included, can we make sure from now on that it is included?
Absolutely. Honestly, it was, if it wasn't included, it was a mistake on our end, and we typically would have done anything like that.
When we do annex the roadway, will we be responsible for improvements and turn lanes and whatnot as this develops out and is so fit?
Right. If the town owns the road, we have control over any improvements that we want to see happen. Otherwise, you know, there have been instances where we have not annexed the roadway because we couldn't, like Annes Drive being one specifically, and the county did require some improvements there when that was done, when Amberton was built. So, but if we annex it, then yes, we have control over it.
Counsel, any other questions of Kevin? Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item F is consideration of an ordinance relative to the annexation and R3 zoning of property located on tax map 54 parcel 15.00, containing approximately 48.3 acres. It's requested by Sean Collins on behalf of Alan and Jean Parker. The property is located at 8916 Rocky Fork Ammival Road, and this is a second reading. Kevin?
Yes, this is just the actual annexation ordinance for this parcel and the adjoining 2,660-feet of roadway. Again, we would be providing all services here except for water, which will be provided by CUD. Land use plan would support a medium-density residential development here. Surrounding zoning is all RM in Rutherford County. There is an existing single-family residence on this parcel that would be annexed as a part of the annexation as well. Again, the planning commission did review this and did recommend approval.
Okay, questions for Kevin on this? Okay, thanks, Kevin. This is a public hearing, so I'll go to the public to see if there's anyone here to speak for or against this item. Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing and go to the council for a motion.
Motion we approve.
Second.
Motion and a second, discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item G is our consideration of a resolution in memorandum of ordinance 19-14 relative to the annexation and R3 zoning of property located on tax map 54 parcel 15.00. Do I have a motion?
I'll move to approve.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item H is also a public hearing. It's a consideration of an ordinance relative to the rezoning of property located on tax map 50E, Group F, parcel 27.00, containing approximately 1.11 acres. It's requested by Mark LaCraul to go from C2 to PUD. The property is located on Ammival Road, and this is a second reading. Kevin?
This is a rezoning request. It's currently zoned C2, requested to be rezoned to a PUD. It's about 1.1 acres, 1.11 acres of property on Ammival Road. It's a part of the overall, the Lee Village development there, the shopping center there. It's, land use plan would support a mix of office, retail, multifamily, and the surrounding zoning is all C2. The proposed PUD is for 5,560 square feet commercial building to be used as a light automotive repair business. Access would be through the existing parking lot and drive aisles of the shopping center. There would not be any access to Ammival Road for that, that whole development there in that area. I did attach the pattern book with the request. The planning commission did review this and did recommend approval unanimously.
Questions of Kevin on this? Okay, seeing no questions of Kevin, I'll go to the public to see if there's anyone here to speak for or against this item. Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing and go to the council for a motion.
A motion we approve.
A motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Thanks. Any discussion?
Only thing I'd like to say is that I like the design and the plot that they've submitted, and I'm glad to see this go from C2 to PRD. Gives us a PUD, gives us a lot more control and at least say in what it's going to come out looking like. So I'd like to see more of this kind of stuff.
Agreed. Anything else? We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item I is a public hearing. It's a consideration of an ordinance relative to the amendment to the, of the text of the Smyrna Municipal Zoning Ordinance to amend Article 3, Section 3.160 regarding telecommunications structures. This is a second reading. Kevin?
Yes, Mayor and Council, this is a text amendment to the zoning ordinance. It's Article 3, Section 3.160, telecommunications structures. This is a complete rewrite of that section. This is a, this being done to address the changing technology of small cell facilities. It would still address conventional cell towers as well as the small cell facilities. This is something that has been discussed several times by the council. The planning commission did review it, did recommend it to you, and this is really just in keeping with the recent state law changes on this issue.
Questions of Kevin on this? We have talked quite a bit about this.
This essentially takes a lot of the restrictions that we put in place away because of the state law, right?
Yeah, we still have some, but.
Kind of took our authority away with the latest state legislation.
Nothing else for Kevin? Then I'll go to the public to see if there's anyone here to speak for or against this Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing and go to the council for a motion.
A move we approve.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item J is consideration of an ordinance relative to the adoption and the enactment of the Town of Smyrna Municipal Code Title II, Boards and Commissions, et cetera, Chapter 7, Charity Assistance Fund Board, Section 704, Memorial Maintenance and Special Projects Subcommittee. This is a second reading. Jeff?
Yes, Mayor and Council, as we've discussed several times, this is going to be a subcommittee of the Smyrna Charity Assistance Fund Board that will be designated for the exclusive control over the collection, management, and distribution of all funds in memory of the Captain Jeff Kous Memorial. This is bringing it back from Rotary. They were really good to us during the Kous Memorial. I'll just bring it back in-house under R501 and be able to divvy those funds out as needed.
Great. Questions of Jeff? Seeing none, I will go to the public to see if there's anyone here to speak for or against this item. Seeing no one, I'll close this public hearing and go to the council for a motion.
A move we approve.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thanks. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item K is consideration of an ordinance to amend ordinance 18-17, adopting the 2018-2019 fiscal year budget, specifically the 2018-2019 fee schedule as it pertains to the municipal court. This is a second reading. Jeff?
Yes, Mayor and Council. This language that is proposed is basically going to, for the fee schedule, to match exactly what the judge adjudicates. I guess previously, the wording that the court used went from diversion fee to now dismissal fee, and light violations also transferred to dismissal fee. So just that it matches up with what the judge orders.
Questions of Jeff on this? I think we've talked quite a bit to Jeff and Nathan about this. Okay, no questions? Then I'll go to the public to see if there's anyone here to speak for or against this item. Seeing no one, I'll close this public hearing and go to the council for a motion.
A move we approve.
A motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item L is consideration of an ordinance to amend the Town of Smyrna Municipal Code Title II, Boards and Commissions, et cetera, Chapter 7, Charity Assistance Fund Board, Section 705, Sister City Funding Subcommittee, and this also is a second reading. Jeff?
Yes, Mayor and Council. Basically mirrors, for the most part, as far as the scope of the memorial subcommittee that we just discussed. This will fall under, as a subcommittee, under the Smyrna Charity Assistance Fund, and this board will be responsible for dispersing those funds to the Sister City Committee.
Questions of Jeff? Then we will go to the public to see if there's anyone here to speak for or against Seeing no one, we'll close this public hearing and go to the council for a motion.
A move we approve.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, any discussion?
Just a quick question.
Sure.
With this, the committee now does not need a treasurer. Is that correct?
Correct, as far as they will not be dispersing the funds. We can change that on the bylaw.
Okay, and then there'll be a separate, like, finance group that says this is Sister City's money, that they'll get a balance every month or so on it?
Correct. Correct.
Any other questions? Ms. Diane, did I get a motion and a second?
You did.
I did, okay, good. Any other discussion? We good? Okay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Our last public hearing of the night, and it is a consideration of an ordinance to amend the Town of Smyrna Municipal Code Title II, Boards and Commissions, et cetera, Chapter 5, Sister City Committee, Section 502, Membership, and this is a second reading. Jeff?
Yes, Mayor and Council. As we just discussed, it was a subcommittee, so that deals with the funding for Sister City. So obviously, we had to change the powers and duties of the committee so that that function, dealing with the money, will come from that subcommittee. And in addition, we've added an additional member to the Sister City Committee, and that's going to be an educator from a secondary school in North Rutherford County. In addition, there are term limits, and we have discussed how those are laid out, starting after, begin, this will be the first term, whoever's in, is in the first term. And also, it has the ability that if there aren't any other applicants, that they can be reappointed. I think that's all.
Questions of Jeff? Okay. Since this is a public hearing, I'll go to the public to see if there's anyone here to speak for or against this item. Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing and go to the council for a motion.
A motion to approve.
A motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. We'll now move on to item 8, which is our new business. We have a couple items under the planning commission report tonight. Our first item is consideration of an ordinance relative to the annexation and PRD zoning of property located on tax map 54, part of parcel 62.01, containing approximately 1.79 acres. It's requested by Land Solutions Company on behalf of John Hill, John Hill, sorry. Property is located west of Rocky Fork and Ammival Road and north of Riley Road. This is a first reading. Kevin?
Yes, Mayor and Council, these next two items are related to one another, so I'll kind of address them both at the same time. The annexation request is the area that is shown in blue on the map. It's about 1.79 acres of property, is the portion of that parcel. The area in red is actually a part of the next item, which is the rezoning request, which they have requested it be changed to R1. And then the, also, the rest of the area that's shown in the light green color is an amendment to the existing PRD. The overall is, the red area will be taken out of the PRD, and then the blue area being added, and then all of it being amended together. The land use plan would support a low-density residential here. Surrounding zoning is RM in the county and the Blakeney PRD here. There's also some R3 on the east side of Rocky Fork Ammival Road. This does lie within CUD's service area for water, but other than that, it would be all services would be provided by the town. The proposed PRD amendment is for a residential development containing 197 single-family lots and 76 townhouses. So it is a net increase of 11 units. Side setbacks for the single-family lots have also been requested to be changed from seven feet to six feet. I did attach the proposed plan that details everything about the proposing to do. The Planning Commission did review this and did recommend approval. There were several conditions. One, to show the common area amenities in compliance with Section 4.071(c10) of the zoning ordinance. Show proposed utility extensions into the project. Number three, the road improvements at Morton Lane and Rocky Fork Amable Road intersection must be constructed as a part of Phase 1. Number four, no building permits will be issued until the fire flow requirement of 100,000, not 100,000 gallons a minute, 1,000 gallons a minute can be met. Chief Phil would love that. Please include fire truck turnarounds at the end of all dead-end streets. Extend 10-inch sewer line to serve the site. Provide fire rating on materials to be used on the side of the homes. Add 14 parking spaces, which is seven on either end of the townhouses near Units 87 and Unit 124. HVAC units are required to be located to the rear. And number 10, kind of gets back to that fire flow requirement. CUD did issue a will-serv letter on March 23rd saying that CUD can only serve domestic water here at up to 270 single-family lots. Fire flow requirements cannot be met until their, their project that they have labeled Rocky Fork Phase 2 Water Main Replacement Project is complete, which is an estimated completion date of spring of 2021. So regardless of this PRD amendment, you really can't make the, or no homes could be constructed here for approximately two years. So, but that was, that's really kind of more, I think they're aware of it, just for the information, for council's information. As far as the annexation and zoning of the 1.79 acres, Planning Commission did review this and did recommend approval.
Kevin, can you help me out with the PRD to R1 section there? What's going on exactly?
Yeah, essentially what's happening is the developer and the adjoining property owner, Mr. Hill, are doing a land swap.
So this is going to become part of Parcel 62.01?
Blue will become part of Parcel 62, essentially, and then the red area would be incorporated into Parcel 62.01.
Gotcha. But all of 62.01, the new part, will not necessarily be in the city, right? It should just be that red part?
The red and the blue, yeah.
Okay. So...
Essentially undeveloped. This is wooded area, yeah. Which the blue will become part of the development.
Yeah. Okay. How close is this to the other piece that Mr. Murphy was just speaking about?
The, the area where, for Rocky Fork Amable Road, you can see that label there, you have the northernmost part of the green tract there. That's where the town limit is currently in, and that's where the 2,660 feet begins that goes northward to the parcel.
So it's right there in the same area?
Yes.
So the reason I bring that up is, one of the items Mr. Murphy mentioned, which I think he's left now, but was traffic. And whenever these developments come forward, we require them to make traffic improvements as required for any intersection or whatever has to be done.
Right.
There are some cases where they have to widen the road, some cases they have to put in a red light, lane additions, et cetera. So I just want to make sure that everyone understands we don't just stay next to a piece of property and then the road stays like it is. The developer's responsible for improvements to that road if it's required about what they're building. And with two different developments now trying to come out there, it would really be two different opportunities for it to be looked at.
Sure. Yeah, and one of the things, as comment or condition number three, part of the, and this goes back to the original PRD as well, the reworking of the intersection of Morton Lane and Rocky Fork Amable Roads that intersects at a 90-degree angle instead of the odd angle it hits now.
Right.
We felt like that was important. One of their access points, you know, would come in near that area, and so it just makes sense. And to do that as part of Phase 1, so it doesn't, because if you don't, if you have homes coming out at the intersection without that improvement, it's going to make an unsafe situation, so.
Other questions for Kevin? And you said, when, when did CUD say before they could get that done, before it could even be started?
Spring of 2021.
Twenty twenty-one, okay.
Are they gonna, is the other, is Mr. Collins gonna have the same problem with the other piece of parcel, or is it, do we know?
I don't know. We haven't seen an actual development plan at that, so I don't know.
So that was just rezoning?
I don't know if he's requested a will-serv...
Or that was just annexation at this point, right?
Yeah, I don't know if he's requested a will-serv letter yet. So I assume probably so, but I can't know that for sure.
Okay.
But if he does, and we have the same issue, it will be the same, we'll deal with it in the same consistent way, that we will not issue any building permits until they can meet fire flow requirements.
That was the point, right? Is that if it's going to be two years on this piece of property, it's probably going to be two years on the other piece as well, at a minimum. Just curious, on the, the area that now is going to be a part of Smyrna, or still part of Smyrna but belongs to the person who owns property outside of Smyrna, when they appraise that, do they just appraise that small area into the city, or how do they do that?
That's a good question. I assume so. I would, I would assume it probably has the same, roughly the same value, it's just going to have that piece of it, they're going to have to...
Percentage of it.
Have a separate tax bill just to the town for that piece of it, yeah.
If he needs a Town of Smyrna assistance, he needs to drag it over to line?
Any other questions, or Kevin, or suggestions?
Catches on fire, we'll put out the red part.
Do I have a motion?
I move we approve.
Do we have a second?
I have a second.
Motion and a second, any other discussion?
I do have a question.
Sure.
So looking at the, while I was looking at the plan, and there is a large area that is strictly trees? Is it because of the typography again?
It's the same situation as we just looked at with Gwyn Farms. You have a large, very steep area on the west part of that property that they're, they're doing the same similar situation as far as just leaving it alone, yeah.
I was just curious.
Other questions? We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Our next item is consideration of an ordinance relative to the amendment of the existing PRD for property located on Tax Map 54, Parcels 47.00 and 62.00, containing approximately 107.15 acres. It's requested by Land Solutions Company. The property is located on Rocky Fork Amable Road. In addition, request includes rezoning 2.44 acres from Parcel 62.00 from PRD to R1. This is a first reading.
Ms. Mayor and Council, again, this is basically just changing the zoning of that small piece from PRD to R1, and then the rest of those two tracts, amending the PRD to be consistent with what they have requested with the changes. The Planning Commission, again, did review this and did recommend approval with all the same conditions that I talked about before.
Questions for Kevin on this? Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
A motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item three is consideration of an ordinance to amend the text of the Smyrna Municipal Zoning Ordinance to amend Article 4, Section 4.075, Building Spacing. And this is a first reading. Kevin?
This is an amendment to the text of the ordinance. It was something that was requested by Planning Commission that we look at, so we brought it to them last, at their last meeting. It would amend Article 4, Section 4.075, Building Spacing. This is a part of the overall section that deals with planned developments. And this basically is an addition to the zoning ordinance that we put in writing, kind of what we've been adding as conditions for the last several times. We've had PRD requests, so this will really communicate it more clearly to potential developers what's required. And essentially, what this does is it would address required materials for the sides of structures where setbacks are less than 10 feet, and would also require HVAC units in that situation to be located in the rear of houses or on roof if it's applicable, if it's a situation where a roof unit would make sense. So the Planning Commission did review this and did recommend approval.
All right. Questions for Kevin on this?
So this essentially just puts in our zoning ordinance requirements that we've been putting in place?
As conditions of PRD approval, so they just...
Keeps you from having to do that second step, right?
Every time, yeah.
Do I have a motion?
I move we approve.
A motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay. Package Liquor Board Report. There were no applications for the Town Council to consider at this time. Item C is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a contract with Warner's Athletic Construction relative to the synthetic turf for baseball fields at Cedarstone Community Park. Mike?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Mayor and Council. Staff received five proposals to provide and install synthetic turf at Cedarstone Park. We opened those on March 19th of this year. Warner's Athletic Construction scored the highest per the evaluation committee. The committee interviewed three companies by teleconference in order to better understand the proposals and listen to the experts. Staff is recommending Warner's to provide and install the turf while also including three logos on each field. Base turf cost for the fields with the logos is $1,341,622. The turf warranty is for eight years except for the high wear areas, and Warner's has also offered to replace the batter's box and catcher's box areas one time at no cost. If you might remember, when we opened bids on the park itself, natural turf and dirt was going to be around a billion dollars, and we talked about it, discussed it, that it might be a better option to go with synthetic turf due to the fertilizing, the site, it's a lot of rock out there, mowing, and mainly staff costs. So I can tell you, the committee was put together, spent a lot of time on it. Sometimes we did not interview, but this time we felt like we needed to. We had excellent proposals from the companies and felt good about several of them, actually. But Warner's scored the highest, and we feel good about them. Obviously, they're right here in town, but they have a lot of experience. If you look through the RFPs, they have performed this type of work on many fields throughout the southeast. But I felt like the others could do the job, too. But they scored the highest, and that's who we're recommending.
Questions for Mike on this?
No question, just a comment, but I've seen some of the things that they've done as well, and they did a nice job.
Yes, we've worked with them several times, and they're here. I didn't ask them to be, but they showed up anyway, they're represented from Shaw Turf and Warner's Athletics. I appreciate that.
Other questions or comments? Do I have a motion?
Move we approve.
Have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item D is appointment of three members of the Arts Commission to serve two-year terms ending 2021, and one member to serve an unexpired term ending 2020, and one member of the Town Council to serve one year, a one-year term ending 2020. And Raquel, I know you all met before the workshop the other day, and you were out of town, so can you kind of give us an update as to what you all discussed?
We met to discuss the direction of the Arts Commission and focusing more on advocacy of the arts organizations that are, that exist now in the town. And so now we need to replenish our boards so that we can focus on that more and be more of an advocate for these different organizations and all the great things that they are doing around town with, in the arts community.
Great. So we have three members that are going to serve two-year terms, one member to serve an unexpired term, and then the council member. So do you want to do the three members first for opening up?
Yes.
Okay. So we will open up the floor for recommendations for the three members to serve two, two-year terms ending in 2021. Do you have recommendations for this?
I do. I have three names. Kyle Dietz, Silvania Rowe, and Damian Tally. He has a hyphenated name, hold on. Damian Marcel Tally.
Okay. Any other nominations? Now we'll close the floor to nominations, and since we have three spots open and we have three recommendations in Kyle Dietz, Silvania Rowe, and Damian Marcel Tally? Yes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations to these three individuals. Now we need to fill one member to serve an unexpired term of 2020, and I will open the floor for nominations.
I'd like to nominate Carrie Finch.
Carrie Finch? Any other nominations? And I will close the floor to nominations, and all in favor of Carrie Finch, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. And we have to have one member of the Town Council to serve a one-year term, and I will nominate Raquel Peebles. Any other nominations? Nobody else wants to do it?
Steve, you sure?
We ought to nominate Mark or H. G., since they're not here.
Can we put two?
Oh, so I will close the floor to nominations. All in favor of Raquel being our council representative, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, Raquel. And we also appreciate you all looking into the direction you all wanted to go, and I think y'all made a great recommendation. Item E is appointment of one educator to the, from a secondary school in North Rutherford County to the Sister City Committee. This was what we just changed during the public hearing phase, and we had two people that applied. One was Ruben Gomez. He did not meet the qualifications as an educator, but Sherry Sutherland, who is the principal at Smyrna High School, did meet the qualifications. So all in favor of Sherry Sutherland serving on the Sister City Committee, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, Dr. Sutherland.
I'm pretty excited about that.
Yeah, I think she'll do a great job. And I think it's nice because the kids that we're trying to recruit for the program will...
Be at her school.
Be at her school, or she will have contact with other principals to have discussion about it. So next is appointment of one citizen member to the Sister City Funding Subcommittee to serve a two-year term ending 2021. And we had one application, this is Sister City, we had one application for this with Paul, is it Paula, is it Paula? Or Paul?
That's Paul.
I think it's Paul, too. I think he put an A.
You mistyped.
Yes. And Paul Colette, and I think he will do a great job. He's on the committee itself, so I think he will be able to bring some knowledge and kind of what's going on for the committee overseeing the finances. So all in favor of Paul Colette, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, Paul. And then appointment of one citizen member to the Charity Assistance Fund Board, Memorial Maintenance and Special Projects Subcommittee to serve a two-year term ending in 2021. We had one person apply for this, in Jerome Dempsey. And I will tell you, Jerome started out from day one on the Kous Memorial project, so I was glad to see that he put in an application, and I think he will do a great job. So all in favor of Jerome Dempsey for the Charity Assistance Fund Board, Memorial Maintenance and Special Project Subcommittee Member, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. I don't have anything on my desk under other tonight. Brian, anything?
Nothing under other.
Nothing under other. It's been a long meeting tonight, a lot of public hearings. Ms. Diane?
You just had a lot of talking.
I just what?
You've just had to do a lot of talking.
I've had to do a lot of talking, yes. Ms. Diane, anything?
We have nothing.
Nothing? Brian?
Yes, Mayor and Council, I do have a couple of things I'd like to share with you.
First, I'd like to recognize one of our officers received a really nice call that was forwarded from Captain Dwyer up on Officer Hicks. A Miss Sonia Lines, whose car had been broken into, came by the police department to file a report. She'd had a pretty rough day, working with some illness in her family and stuff, and just went back home and decided to make a call supporting Officer Hicks and the work he did. She even said in her phone call, "I don't normally do this for police officers." I thought, how apropos, that, you know, that we hear that a lot. But congratulations to Officer Hicks and our police department for continuing to do a tremendous job in serving our community. I just wanted to point that out.
Brian, you know, they say that the cream rises to the top, and Mr. Hicks's name has come up several times in the last few months. So, I think he must be one of the top officers there. I've seen some emails, I've seen several things come up with his name, so thanks to what-
He's a good officer and does a good job for us.
Thanks for what he's doing, Chief. Make sure he knows that we, it's not going unnoticed.
Also, I wanted to point out, you know, it's always good when we get letters of appreciation or, you know, congratulations and those kind of things. We actually have one from our own employee, Angie Rose, who works for us at the water department. Recently was at the doctor's office with one of her children, and she was concerned about what the physician was treating her daughter, and some of the insurance concerns that the doctor had shared with her. He was very, pretty outspoken about when he came back and talked about how well our insurance policy was in comparison to what he sees. And that just goes to my heart, as we continue to help our employees by providing the best possible services we can to them. And Miss Rose was very appreciative and wrote a really nice letter back to our HR department for the work that they do to make sure that we have the best health care and the best insurance possible. So, kudos to them. I just wanted to let you know that Hal Loughlin, as some of us know, been in some budget meetings the last couple of days, had some surgery this morning. You know, hate to call any surgery minor, but it was some shoulder surgery, and he is home and doing well. I don't think he'll be swinging a golf club for a few days, but hopefully-
And some folks will go through extreme measures to get out of a budget retreat.
I pointed that out to him the other day, but I am happy to know he's home and doing well. Couple of things I want to point out that are on the monitor. April the 21st from 10 to 2, reservations could be made at 615-459-4444 to the Town Event Center. That'll be our Easter Sunday Grand Buffet, and man, I don't know if you guys noticed the menu that's posted down at the town center, but it's also available online to see. Pretty tremendous opportunity, and I know we're already over 200 reservations, so if you have some thought that you want to participate in this, I would say make sure you're calling pretty quick to get on that list. We're excited about our Sunday, Easter Sunday Buffet. Next, Sound the Alarm. This is something you may not have heard much about, but Chief Culberson and I have been working with American Red Cross on Saturday, April the 27th, from, I think, 8 o'clock to noon roughly.
Yes.
We're looking to go out and install 200 fire alarms. We worked with Tom Rose and the chief to designate some areas in our downtown area. There are some homes that possibly fire detectors were not in some of those homes prior to that time when they were built with the codes and those kind of things. We'll also be replacing any bad fire alarms. So if you have a desire to get a fire alarm checked, or possibly add some to your home, give us a call, call the fire department, call here at the office, the Red Cross, and we'll get you on the list. We'll be working, I think, with about 65 or 70 volunteers that morning, going out in teams with a bucket full of fire alarms and a drill. So we're looking forward to that. So, Sound the Alarm. The last thing I have is, and I, Chief, you're gonna have to help me, I can't remember, I was just trying to look up the date, one of the chiefs on the blood drive, the Battle of the Badges, it's early May. But anyway, with the American Red Cross, again, we're working with, May the 3rd, with Rutherford County Law Enforcement and Fire, and Laverne, and Smyrna, and Murfreesboro. And we've got a Battle of the Badges going on. You could go online to the Red Cross site and sign up. I think we're up to about 35 or 36 donors. We'll be doing this again at the town center on May the 3rd, and you have to, when you sign up, you have to choose which badge you want to represent, the police or the fire. And there will be some bragging rights involved in this, right, Chief?
Yes, sir.
But we are excited about that, looking forward to working again with the Red Cross on the Battle of the Badges blood drive. That's all I have, Mayor.
You know, I really appreciate you all doing the smoke detector thing. I think it's just another, another thing that we do here in the community that's about neighbor helping neighbor, and I really appreciate you all and the volunteers that are out doing this and making our neighbors safe. So, thanks for taking part in that. Jeff Peach?
The only thing I wanted to say is, you know, Brian's always talking about other folks, but I wanted to say, you know, going into fiscal year and having the budget retreat is not a, an undaunting task for him. And being able to work with him over the last fiscal year, it's been a pleasure to work with him, and I just wanted to let him know I really appreciate it.
Are we gonna hug now?
Yes. And Chief did tell me that the reason that we have police here is so that firemen will have heroes.
Oh, that coming. That coming from a former Smyrna police officer, right?
Yeah, that's exactly what I said.
Hopefully your house doesn't catch on fire.
Does it work where you live? I think there's some rope construction going on there.
I pay my insurance.
Anything else you want to add to that? I think you've dug your hole deep enough already.
The first thing you can do when you realize you're in a hole is stop digging.
I pay my taxes.
Raquel?
Just want to thank all of the directors and Brian for the budget retreat, all the work that was done. I think it went very well, and I know you all took a lot of time to get that done, so appreciate all the hard work. Thank you.
Tim?
Raquel said it all there, nothing for me.
Jerry?
Just want to wish everybody a happy Easter, that's all I've got.
Great. Steve?
I've just got two minor announcements, both personal. My daughter and Caleb Gagne, I couldn't even get it out for a second there, are getting married on April 20th, the Saturday of Easter. So, if you happen to see them out in town, give them congratulations. They've got a cruise booked, and I've already started packing her stuff, so we're ready. And then my son will be in town for the wedding next Sunday, so he'll be home for 10 days, which is only the second, third time he's been home since he went to the Marine Corps, so it's kind of nice to see him. So, I'm gonna be enjoying a lot of family, coming in from out of town and coming home. So it'd be nice to have everybody home for a few days.
Great. Anything else?
Nope.
Okay, couple of items. The Smyrna Fire and Police Department's Annual Easter Egg Hunt will be this Saturday, the 13th, at 1 o'clock at Lee Victory Recreation Park, and be there on time. We've said it every time, be there early, because once it starts, it's over quick. I've not looked at the weather, is anybody, do we think the weather's good for Saturday? I've not even looked.
Sun's always shining in my backyard.
Good answer, Chief. Next, we have our Earth Day Celebration, which is Saturday, April 20th, from 11 to 3 at the SOAC. And you can celebrate Earth Day with your family and friends, come enjoy live animal shows, meet a princess, climbing rooms, and interactive learning on how to keep our earth safe. You can register through Community Pass. Next, we have our Women's Self-Defense Class, our Rape Aggression Defense, known as RAD, and it's a women's-only self-defense program designed to enhance the human natural flight or fight, fight or flight response when dealing with aggression. The entire 12-hour course is broken down into four separate three-hour classes. The four sessions are May 1, 2, 8, and 9. These are Wednesday and Thursday nights from 6 to 9. Mother, daughter, student teams are strongly encouraged. The minimum age is 12 years old, without a maximum age for participation. Juvenile students will need a parent or guardian release, and there is no charge to attend these classes. And I will tell you, they are highly recommended by ones who have attended. So, if this is something you're interested in- I'm assuming they're at the station. Is it at the police department?
Where they train yourself.
Yes.
I think it's at the fire department, Chief.
Yes, Station 2.
Okay, so it's gonna be held at Station 2, but to get signed up, you can go to www rad-systems.com, or you can contact Sergeant Bobby Gibson here at Town Hall. Then we have our Top Gun Night Run Friday, May 31st at 9:00 PM, which is quickly approaching, and it will start at the event center and end up at the memorial. We do have space available. I will tell you, it's also filling up fast. We're only going to allow 500 participants, and you can register online. It is a $50 registration fee, but that will include a tee shirt and an award at the finish line. The Smyrna Police and Fire Youth Academy will be June 17th through the 21st. This is for ages 8 to 13, and it's at Fire Station 2, located on Fitzhugh Boulevard. The sessions are from 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM Monday through Thursday, and 8:00 AM to noon on Friday. Graduation will be at 11:00 AM on Friday. Applications must be completed and submitted along with the class fee of $30. The fee is to supplement the food cost and transportation. A liability release allowing students of, treatment of injuries and for transporting the students for facility tours is also required. Chief, are we filling up pretty fast? Do you know?
The academy is, yes, it's going very fast. Saturday's forecast is 70 degrees with 20% chance of rain.
Ah, so we're gonna be good for Saturday. If you are interested in the Police and Fire Academy, I would recommend you get your child signed up quickly, and it is another program that is a really great opportunity here at the town of Smyrna. String cleanups are April 20th from 9 to noon, and May 11th from 9 to noon. You can get in contact with Greg Upham if individually you're interested, or you have a group that is interested. We also have summer camp registration continuing for our SOAC, and you can register online for these at Community Pass. I just have a couple of items tonight. Chief, thanks for all you guys did for the Safety Expo. It was a huge success, and got quite a few trained in CPR. Parker and Taylor enjoyed it, and Parker actually needs it for an internship, and she is substitute teaching. So for both of them, I think it is gonna hopefully not come in handy, but if it's ever needed, they'll both be prepared. I met with the other mayors here in Rutherford County to talk a little bit about the census that will be coming up. It will, Kevin, when will they start getting their forms next year?
It'll be, I don't know the exact time, I know April 1st is the official count day, so I'm running that time right.
So, next year, please help us get the word out of how important it is for every citizen to be, every member of our community to be counted. That means money in our general fund, and means that we can keep our taxes low. So, be on the lookout for that. We kicked off baseball season on Saturday at the Rec Park. Man, they had some three and four-year-olds out there playing, and you talking about cute, some of them were hitting the ball and taking off to the pitcher's mound, or they ran to first base and then headed right on back into the dugout. So, some really cute ones, but a fun time getting started here in the town. And last but not least, you've heard a couple of us talk about the budget retreat. For those of you that don't know, our department heads put together a budget. They present that budget to Rex and to Brian, and then they whittle on it a little bit based on what our revenues are coming in and what our priorities, and then we have a retreat for two days with all of the department heads and the council, and go over all of that. And thank you to each one of you. It's been, for us, a busy last two days, but for you all, a busy last couple of months, and we appreciate all that you all have done to get a budget presented to us. And I'm really excited about what we have coming up in the next fiscal year. We have a lot of stuff taking place here in the town of Smyrna. So, anything else? No? If nothing else, then we're adjourned.